I'm going to call the city council meeting back in session out of the executive session. So I will now ask the clerk to read the ordinance in its entirety, the ordinance setting the salaries of the mayor and city clerk treasury declaring an emergency and for other purposes whereas the Van Buren City Council desires to grant a salary increase for the mayor and city clerk treasurer which would be reflected on the city payroll beginning January 1, 2020. Now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the city council of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas that section one beginning on the first day of January 2020, the annual salary of the mayor and city clerk treasurer shall be as follows, mayor sixty-six thousand dollars, city clerk treasurer forty-nine thousand dollars. Section two is therefore found that due to the need to process the payroll and emergency is declared to exist and this ordinance being necessary for the preservation of the public health, safety and welfare, it shall take effect from an address, passage and approval. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules and go over a second reading?
Motion.
There's a motion, second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Ours have it. The motion carried and asks the clerk to read the ordinance by title for a second time.
An ordinance setting the salaries of the mayor and city clerk treasurer declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Do we have a motion in further to suspend the rules and go over a third and final reading?
Motion.
Motion, second. And second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Ours have it. The motion carried and asks the clerk to read the ordinance by title for a third and final reading.
An ordinance setting the salaries of the mayor and city clerk treasurer declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Okay. We'll have a discussion.
Okay. I would like to propose in order for us to stay in line with cities of like size that we increase the mayor's salary to eighty-six thousand dollars per year and increase the city clerk treasurer's salary to fifty-nine thousand dollars per year.
I think, you know, we were able to see some data from across the state that really backs this up as far as where similar cities of our size, our location, as far as proximity to other places, it all, this will put us in line with what we feel the requirements of the job are worth, what this position, the weight that it carries, and it lines up with other cities from across the state.
Your kids will still be on the freeway.
Any other comments, questions?
Motion to approve. That's amended.
We have a motion to approve, ordinance has amended. We have a second? Second. Motion is second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Nealon.
Aye.
Councilmember Petty.
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swain.
Aye.
Councilmember Wood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
Ours have it. Before I declare the ordinance and the number, and it is passed, we have an emergency clause. So do I have a motion to pass the emergency clause?
So move.
Motion.
Second.
Yes, second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Nealon.
Aye.
Councilmember Petty.
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swain.
Aye.
Councilmember Wood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
Ours have it. Now I declare the ordinance number.
Nineteen dash two thousand nineteen.
Ordinance number nineteen dash two thousand nineteen has passed. Next item on the agenda is a resolution to adopt a budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty. I'll ask the clerk to please read, please read the resolution.
Being enacted by the city council for the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, a resolution being entitled, a resolution adopting a proposed budget for the fiscal year ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of Van Buren, Arkansas that section one, the two thousand twenty proposed expenditures of sixteen million eight hundred eighty-one thousand four hundred nine dollars, sixteen million eight hundred eighty-one thousand four hundred eight dollars, issue of our corporate and a copy of said budget is attached here to and made a part hereof. Section two, the appropriations made herein include additional pay for holidays for all agents, servants and employees of the city of Van Buren included, but not limited to uniformed employees as provided for by the laws of the state of Arkansas.
You know, we had a study session on this budget a couple of weeks ago, last week, two weeks ago. We included the new budget, revised one in your packet, and of course we need to make these changes as well to follow in the ordinance, but I just want to reiterate again how much I appreciate all the department heads and just all the work that has been put into that, all the help that I was given. It was really a, it was a great joint effort, and I'm confident that we're going to provide the services next year that we need to provide our citizens.
In that same vein, Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation that we increase the budgeted amount for legal services to cover maybe some of additional services that fall outside the scope of the city attorney's current job description, she's more than capable of doing it, but that maybe isn't currently in the scope, so I would like to recommend that we increase that. Currently you've got budgeted twenty for legal services, and I'm assuming in relation to litigation, I don't know that for a fact, but I would say thirty thousand, increase it by thirty to fifty to get budgeted by. With the intention of it being done by the city attorney whose needs, for first, and then if she sees that she needs to outsource it.
Second. Is that what we need? Do we have a motion?
I have the motion.
I may have a question.
You have the motion, okay.
And also to make the changes to. So we have a motion, and.
Sparkman.
Sparkman. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Nealon.
Aye.
Councilmember Petty.
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swain.
Aye.
Councilmember Wood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
Ours have it. I declare the motion, which is number, or the resolution, number.
Twelve dash two dash two thousand nineteen.
Twelve dash two dash two thousand nineteen is passed. Next item on the agenda is the ordinance amending subdivision regulations. I'll ask the court to read the ordinance in its entirety.
Being enacted by the city council for the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance amending the subdivision regulations, adding regulations concerning access to arterial and collector streets and declaring an emergency, whereas the city adopted ordinance zero seven dash two thousand three, for the purpose of adopting subdivision regulations, establishing regulations governing development of land in the city of Van Buren, and whereas notice of a public hearing was duly published and a public hearing was conducted by the Van Buren Planning Commission to consider these proposed amendments, and whereas the proposed changes herein were recommended by a majority vote of the entire planning commission. Now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the city council of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, that section one, paragraph C, article four of the subdivision regulation is amended to read as follows, one, size as referenced in the Van Buren zoning ordinance for the zoning classification of the proposed development, two, area as referenced in the Van Buren zoning ordinance for the zoning classification of the proposed development, three, width as referenced in the Van Buren zoning ordinance for the zoning classification of the proposed development, four, collector or arterial streets, any lot that includes a single-family dwelling, row house or duplex shall not have access along any street designated on the master street plan as a principal arterial, minor arterial, collector street class one or collector street class two. Five, corner lots, single-family dwellings, row houses or duplex lots shall have access from the lowest classified street according to the street classifications of the master street plan, if the streets have the same classification, the dwelling unit may have access to either of the streets. Six, double furnished lots, when a residential lot has street furnished on the front and back of the lot, driveway access is permitted on only one, one street, and the access must be from the lower classified street as classified on the master street plan. Section two, these amendments are effective on any lot that is part of subdivision platform that has been approved and filed following the adoption of this ordinance. Section three, severability, the various provisions and parts of this ordinance are hereby declared to be severable, and if any section or part of a section or any provision or part of a provision herein is declared to be unconstitutional, inappropriate or invalid by any court of competent jurisdiction, such holdings shall not invalidate or affect the remainder of this ordinance, and to that extent their provisions heretofore are declared to be severable. Section four, emergency clause, the passage and approval of these amendments to the Van Buren ordinance, zero seven dash nineteen sixty-three, as amended, will protect the city and its citizens by prohibiting residential driveways from backing into streets with higher volumes of traffic and at faster speeds. Therefore, emergency is declared to exist and this ordinance being necessary for the preservation of the public health, safety and welfare shall be in full force and take effect immediately upon after its passage.
Do we have a motion to suspend the rules and go over a second reading?
So move.
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ours have it. The motion carried and asks the clerk to read the ordinance by title for a second time.
An ordinance amending the subdivision regulations, adding regulations concerning access to arterial and collector streets and declaring an emergency.
Do we have a motion in further to suspend the rules and go over a third and final reading?
So move.
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carried and asks the clerk to read the ordinance by title for a third and final reading.
An ordinance amending the subdivision regulations, adding regulations concerning access to arterial and collector streets and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bailey included a memo describing basically what these changes will do, the need for it, how it's going to protect our citizens in the future. Mr. Bailey, if you have anything else to add, maybe?
Sure. If you ask me to talk, I'll do that. Internally, we have, we're starting to have discussions about the proper, you know, impact of cars, residential traffic, particularly on collector and arterial streets, whether the parking in the streets or whether there were situations like this. Typically, a collector streets, you know, you have a whole tier of streets, you start with the local streets where we live, go to the collector streets, collecting all the traffic from the local streets, taking them on out to the arterial streets, and eventually it all gets, you know, the streets get faster, the streets get more volume, and, you know, that's their job, that's the job of that street, as it gets bigger, the collector and arterial is to move the traffic and keep the traffic moving. We all, and you all know, we all live, most of us, I guess, have all lived, in a house or residential property where the way we get out is that we back the car out into the street. Well, backing the car out into the street where you've got a street such as a collector and arterial, the car's moving faster and a higher volume of cars moving, it's slowing down the cars, or it presents a dangerous situation for the cars as they're, for the people backing out, or for the people moving forward. One of the first places I noticed when I came here, we started talking about internally about some of these things, was the new legacy Valley subdivision that's about to open on North Ridge. All those lots are planted, the way that's been developed, all the lots are planted facing North Ridge, so there's no choice but for those cars come out on North Ridge. And the reason I bring that up is because you know what North Ridge is like, most all of you do. Citizens are traveling North Ridge now, primarily you go to Fifty-Nine Highway, you go to Wal-Mart, and the other shopping centers there. When the school opens next year, it's going to be even more busy, and there's going to be more impacts on the traffic and the situation. That's, that's what the situation we're trying to prevent is for traffic impacts, either slowing the traffic down or to, or to impacts that's going to create a traffic safety hazard for anybody backing out or anybody who's traveling on North Ridge itself. But not just North Ridge, but other examples of collector roads, other than North Ridge, we'll be out on the Boulevard and North Eleventh Street, you know the volume of traffic there and what's happening there. And the arterial streets are examples, like Fayetteville Road and Alma Highway, those are the two, you know, those are the big arterial streets. You don't want residential houses or any type of driveway where cars are backing out into those roads. Now, this does not say that, the proposal does not, this first ordinance is about subdivision regulation, it's just about the design of the subdivision, it's not about the existing driveways. We're not going to take anybody's driveway away from them, nothing like that's happening with this, it's just about the design. And with the design and the layout of the subdivision, is when you have lots that, residential lots for one and two family dwellings that would be facing a collector or an arterial street, that they also be designed, that they would have frontage on an internal street, so that the driveway would be on the internal street, not on the collector and arterial where the higher volume of traffic is going. And that's the intent of this first ordinance, and ordinance number eight on your agenda is that we keep the traffic, we keep the driveways off of the, those collector and arterial streets in the design of the subdivision. And of course, the planning commission, as you heard the clerk read the ordinance, section two, the planning commission wanted to be sure and make statement that, you know, any previously approved subdivisions were, you know, if they were approved, then they could have, you know, the driveways, obviously if they were already approved, and that was the intent of that, section number two, motion of the planning commission. And, well, we're getting number nine, I'll explain number nine.
Question here on section two, what about, what about a thoroughfare that already exists with housing on it, for instance, Eleventh Street or Rena Road? What if someone buys a piece of property and builds a new house on that?
And if that property has no choice, if that property is planted in, well, it's just residential size, and it has no frontage, no possible street frontage, other than Rena Road, for example, then they're not, they've got no choice but to get a driveway. Yeah, that's just.
I think the language is self-limiting to any new subdivision class in section two. Right.
What? I'm sorry.
Don't you think it's self-limiting to any new subdivision class?
Yes.
So if someone builds in those old areas, are they required to put in a circle drive? Are they required to put in a T-bone?
They would not be, they would not be required to, what we, what David and I have talked about is that they, when they come in, this passes, even somebody in an, if it's not effective, we need to have a conversation with them and try to talk about, about how this is a safety hazard, and you need to do, you need to consider doing something other than just backing out into that street. Most properties, most people I've seen do that, there are some that don't want to, but that would be, that would be a concern. And that's where I came from, we had this provision, and the planning commission often gave variances when somebody would, but required the design to be a circle drive or a T-bone.
If we eliminated section two of this, would that take care of that issue?
Actually, section two in the next ordinance is probably better, but taking it out of this ordinance wouldn't be, you know, I think, for me, it was, we're not going to go back on any pre-approved subdivision and say, now you've got to go back and redesign the subdivision.
Sure.
We're just not going to do that.
Sure.
But, I don't, actually, for me, it didn't matter whether that section's in there or not in the subdivision ordinance, but it probably, because it's, you know, if something's already been approved, the planning commission's already approved the subdivision, subdivision has come to the council, and you've already approved it, it's been approved with residential lots having frontage only on collector or arterial, and it's already approved.
Al, are you saying you think we should make it retroactive then?
Well, I think if someone builds, if someone buys a lot on, say, Rena Road or Eleventh Street.
In existence of the.
Yeah, then, then we should be able to tell them that they need to go by the new rules, and either put in a circle drive or put in a T-bone drive, where they can turn on their own property.
That we kind of do now, if a non-conforming burns down and they redeal, we require them to meet the new, the newer provisions.
I mean, that eliminates the complete danger on Rena Road or Eleventh Street, wherever, you know, as opposed to having maybe one or two or five homes that could put us in a dangerous situation with fire or police, either one. You guys agree with that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
We drive, we drive, those are the streets we drive to go to emergency scenes.
Sure.
So the people parking in those roads or backing out of those roads are a huge hazard. They'll, they see a spot, a lot of times, people will pull over because they see a fire truck are here, and a lot of people see that as their opportunity to get out in traffic.
Sure.
They'll pull out or back out and then stop.
Sure.
And so, so it's, a lot of, and that, that would be a lot safer for us and the public if they, if they would pull out forward, or if they, and the biggest thing with me, more so than backing out, is parking on those roads, makes it almost impossible for our ladder trucks.
Yep.
We, we have to pass through there, and it slows down the response, it puts, it's just, I'm, I'm with them both, both directions, yeah, it's just dangerous.
Okay.
It is dangerous.
And the parking issue, we've had, had a little discussion with that, at one of our last planning permission meetings, we'll be bringing something back in the near future if we don't have that issue.
I'd like to see us scratch section two.
The only, the only cause for pause, and I'll defer to David and Pauline, but we're talking and we're thinking, or I am thinking, the majority of our thought process is around newer stuff, but we still got a whole lot of other old, 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 original plated subdivisions, but this could be a burden.
Here's, here's my concern about where, if you have a, and this kind of bleeds over into the next item, next agenda, well, if you have someone that has a corner lot, and one side's facing a local street, one side's facing a collector or arterial street, the driveway is currently on the local street, it's conforming, but then they decide, I want to get a driveway permit to be able to access my backyard, to pull the RV or the boat in and out of the backyard on a collector or arterial street. As drafted, they'd be able to do that, but is that the best thing or the safest thing without that having to go before asking for a variance from the planning commission for that driveway on a collector or arterial street? They might be willing to do that, looking at the facts, but to say that it's okay, it's only up to you to decide.
So are you then saying that you agree that the section two could be stricken and you'd be happy, or?
Well, to me, section two is very limiting, and it's, it's only going to apply, the way, the way, the motion of the planning commission, the section two of both of these ordinance is only going to apply to anything that's developed from this date forward, if you approve of this thing.
And.
And the rest of the city would not be subject to it.
We.
And that, and that concerns me, because there's a lot of properties in the city that where a driveway could be placed, that could be problematic for traffic or, or public safety.
What we also see is somebody going in by an older section in town, subdivision is already established, a corner lot, and come back to the duplex, but then they want driveways going both ways or something, we don't have any way to limit it.
Okay, so I guess my question is, to be more specific, was there, was this section two put in there because of something the planning commission?
That was their motion.
Recommended?
Yes.
But what I hear from David and you is it would be better overall if it was stricken.
We think so, we think it would be a better, safer situation for the city as a whole. There are going to be, there are going to be, as in every law and every situation, there's going to be an extenuating circumstance, and we're going to try to do our best and work with anybody, you know, we don't want anybody to have to build a half million dollar bridge to get to the local street across the property, if their best, you know, proper acts, best access is going to be from that collector or, either the street or that public land, or we, but the planning commission is involved.
Is anybody on the planning commission here? Yeah, to me, I mean, it makes sense, it sounds like it's got the support of the staff, but I, there obviously had to be reasons for it not to.
Well, the reason stated, and was just what you had said, because of the previous, previously plotted subdivisions where a development might have had a plan for driveways to be placed on the collector or arterial street, and to disavow possible variances for a number of them to come forward, that would be, we should try and go with that.
They would be able to come to apply for variance if they disagreed with the interpretation?
There is a very, yes, there is a various procedure in the control of access ordinance, there is a various procedure.
So let me just ask about specifically, like, block town, one of the block towns. I know there's some rear garage access there, but if, let's just say, someone tore one of those down, and they wanted to build a new one, this would say you have to have a rear garage access in order to build a house, or a house would have to have a rear garage access to that road, I mean, to that house with that road.
Well, you shouldn't have a driveway, you should not have a residential driveway on Fifty-Nine Highway.
But right now, they are, Paul's old, homes are, and, and so, by removing that, we could little by little take away at that, as it is, as this is right now, they're going to always be able to do that forever.
Right, right. And let me say, on, on that particular situation, if they don't have another access from another street, local street, and obviously that's, if the collector or the arterial is the only access the lot has, then that's what they want to get, driveway.
The design.
Usually somebody accesses the property.
But the design would then come into it at that point, like Alan was talking about. Sir, are you making a motion to strike?
I make a motion that we strike section two.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion to adopt the, this is to adopt the ordinance with the changes.
With the changes.
To section two, as mentioned, so we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Nealon.
Aye.
Councilmember Petty.
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swain.
Aye.
Councilmember Wood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye. Ours have it. There's also an emergency clause, do I have a motion to pass that emergency clause?
So move.
And a second. Motion, second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Nealon.
Aye.
Councilmember Petty.
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swain.
Aye.
Councilmember Wood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
Ours have it. The ordinance number.
Two zero dash two zero one nine.
Two zero dash two zero will now pass.
And I would like to just add, now that we passed it, that we encourage, and I know that they always have, encourage staff to work with, and let us know if it created an unintended consequence to any of our citizens, but I think this is a good change.
Next item on the agenda is the ordinance amending the control of access ordinance with regard to our previous conversation, I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance in its entirety.
Being enacted by the city council for the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, an ordinance amending ordinance two, two three dash nineteen ninety-six for control of access to streets and highways, adding access regulations for residential subdivision sites, declaring an emergency, whereas the city adopted ordinance twenty-three dash nineteen ninety-six for the purpose of establishing regulations governing control of access to streets and highways in the city of Van Buren, and whereas notice of a public hearing was duly published and a public hearing was conducted by the Van Buren Planning Commission to consider these proposed amendments, and whereas the proposed changes herein were recommended by a majority vote of the entire planning commission, now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the city council of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, that section one, the title of article three shall be amended to read as follows, article three, access. Section two, a new section shall be added to article three as follows, section five, residential sites and subdivisions, a collector or arterial streets, any lot that includes a single-family dwelling, row house or duplex shall not have access along any street designated on the master street plan as a principal arterial, minor arterial, collector street class one or collector street class two, B, corner lots, single-family dwellings, row houses or duplex. B corner lots, single family dwellings, rowhouses or duplex lots shall have access from the lowest classified street according to the street classifications of the master street plan. If the streets have the same classification, the dwelling unit may have access to either of the streets. C double frontage lots, when a residential lot has street frontage on the front and back of the lot, driveway access is permitted on only one, one street. And the access must be from the lowest classified street as classified on the master street plan. Section two, these amendments are effective on any lot that is part of the subdivision plan that has been approved and filed following the adoption of this ordinance. Section three, severability, the various provisions and part of this provision are hereby declared to be severable. And if any section are part of a section or any provision or part of a provision herein is declared to be unconstitutional, inappropriate, or invalid by any court of competent jurisdiction, such holdings shall not invalidate or affect the remainder of this ordinance. And to that extent, the provisions heretofore are declared to be severable. Section four, emergency clause, the passage and approval of these amendments to the Vambyran ordinance zero seven dash nineteen sixty three as amended will protect the city and its citizens by prohibiting residential driveways from backing industries with higher volumes of traffic and, and at faster speeds. Therefore, an emergency is declared to exist and this ordinance being necessary for the preservation of the public health, safety, and or welfare shall be in full force and take effect immediately upon after each passage.
Do we have a motion to suspend the rules and go to a second reading?
Motion.
Motion, second. All in favor? Opposed? Odds have it, declare the motion carrying. Ask clerk to read the ordinance by title for a second time.
An ordinance amending ordinance two three dash nineteen ninety six for the control of access to streets and highways, adding access regulations for residential subdivisions and sites, declaring an emergency.
Does motion to further suspend the rules and go to a third and final reading?
Motion.
Second. All in favor? Opposed? Odds have it, declare the motion carrying. Ask clerk to read the ordinance by title for a third and final reading.
An ordinance amending ordinance two three dash nineteen ninety six for the control of access to streets and highways, adding access regulations for residential subdivisions and sites, declaring an emergency.
Okay, so this is, in some ways, just like the previous.
Yeah, it's just like the previous one. The first ordinance was about the, really governed the design of the subdivision. This one does pretty much what we were just talking about, the existing lots throughout the city. We have a, this control of access ordinance already governs the design of commercial driveways and industrial driveways. We're adding this section to that ordinance for the design of residential driveways.
So we need to eliminate section two on the second page?
Yes. And we'll be very adamant and say, yes, I believe section two of this one.
I make a motion that we accept as changed, as mentioned.
There's a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the rules.
Councilmember Nealon.
Aye.
Councilmember Petty.
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swayne.
Aye.
Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
Odds have it, for the emergency clause, do we have a motion for the, the, the motion? And a second. Clerk, please call the rules.
Councilmember Nealon.
Aye.
Councilmember Petty.
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swayne.
Aye.
Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
Odds have it, declare the ordinance number.
Two one dash two thousand nineteen.
Twenty one dash two thousand nineteen, it's passed. Now, for a final ordinance. The ordinance, I don't want the agenda, is an ordinance for a final purchase of property from municipal utility ordinance. Ask the clerk to please read the ordinance in its entirety.
Been enacted by the City, City Council for the City of Vambyran, Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled and ordinance approving the purchase of property from J.W. Floyd, the commissioner on the Municipal Utilities Commission, ratifying the purchase of the property and for other purposes. Whereas the City of Vambyran, Arkansas, owns a water work system and a wastewater collection and treatment system, both being operated and maintained and administered by the City of Vambyran Municipal Utilities Commission, commissioned pursuant to ordinance nine dash nineteen sixty five. And whereas the commission previously determined that additional real property was needed for the purpose of land application of bio-solids generated by the city's three, three wastewater treatment plants. And whereas, after negotiating with sellers of the real property, one of the sellers, including J.W. Floyd, the commission offered by resolution dated March nineteen, two thousand nineteen, to purchase said property for the amount of three hundred eighty seven thousand dollars. And whereas the Vambyran City Council approved the purchase of the real property from J.W. Floyd, one of five co-owners of said real property pursuant to resolution number three dash two dash two thousand nineteen. And whereas J.W. Floyd is commissioner on the City of Vambyran Municipal Utilities Commission, and whereas pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated section fourteen dash forty two, dash one zero seven, officials or employees of the City of Vambyran may not contract with the city unless approved by ordinance of the City Council. And whereas the City Council of the City of Vambyran wishes to approve connecting business with your four said commission member and ratify the sale of the property in all respects. Now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the City Council of the City of Vambyran, Arkansas. That's section one. The Vambyran City Council hereby expressly authorized the purchase of property as set forth in the attached resolution from the City of Vambyran Municipal Utilities Commission, Commissioner J.W. Floyd, one of five co-owners of said property, and ratifies in all respects the sale of the property pursuant to City of Vambyran Resolution number three dash two dash two thousand nineteen.
Do we have a motion to suspend the rules and go to a second reading? A motion.
Second.
A second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Odds have it, declare the motion carrying. Ask clerk to read the ordinance by title for a second time.
An ordinance approving the purchase of property from J.W. Floyd, the commissioner on the Municipal Utilities Commission, ratifying the purchase of the property and for other purposes.
Do we have a motion to further suspend the rules and go to a third and final reading?
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Odds have it, declare the motion carrying. Ask clerk to read the ordinance by title for a third and final reading.
An ordinance approving the purchase of property from J.W. Floyd, the commissioner on the Municipal Utilities Commission, ratifying the purchase of the property and for other purposes.
May I have this question? If we approved this resolution back in March, why are we doing this again?
This is something that we've identified. We felt it was appropriate. We spoke to the city attorney, just to fully disclose that this purchase of property, one of the five owners was a board member. In the past, we, we normally pass resolutions acknowledging such business that we conduct with either employees or other officials. And so, we, we discussed it and just wanted to make sure we were, better be safe.
Because he wasn't specifically identified in the ordinance, obviously.
And it was just a resolution and it required to have an ordinance.
Okay. Nothing, nothing has changed. We're ratifying the previous ordinance. Utilities Director Dufrain and Board President Williamson are here, if you have anything to add.
Yeah, no, if you, if anybody's got any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer any questions.
As I understand it, all of the requisite permitting process was performed before the purchase and all of the.
Absolutely.
There was appraisal that was done.
Absolutely.
And so, this is just a matter of, knowing that I can make sure you comply with requirements and ordinance.
Motion to approve. A motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Clerk, please call the rules.
Councilmember Nealon.
Aye.
Councilmember Petty.
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swayne.
Aye.
Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
Odds have it, declare the ordinance number.
Twenty two dash two thousand nineteen.
Twenty three dash two thousand nineteen, it's passed. Next on the agenda is the financial report. We have copies of the other reports. Clerk, please read the.
One million, one hundred ninety six thousand, nine hundred fifty one dollars, eleven cents.
Motion to pay bills. Motion, pay bills, for a second. Motion and a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Clear the motion here. Make sure the department reports, you have copies of those reports from all of the departments. If you have any questions, you can answer those. If not, you'll file those, that's the end. Under general miscellaneous discussion, are there any comments or questions from the public? If not, I, I didn't want to mention, just get a general opinion. In the past, I don't know if you've seen the news, but various cities in our region are looking into solar power, looking into potentially contracting with solar companies that will provide new electricity, solar power instead of their current electricity provider. And those companies will provide savings, potential savings for a year. And I have been in contact with the superintendent of the municipal district just to see the benefits of forming a partnership with him and the city to have potential solar power for our city-owned, our city-owned buildings and also for the school district on their side. I don't know how much savings it will be. We've got to do some research on that. We have to sit there and hold our bills for those buildings. But I think it's worth looking at what other cities have saved. I think it's worth looking into.
I'm working on a project in Woodless, Arkansas, and I know Fayetteville has it, but all of the energy companies are wanting to promote that. But this, this is not like the old cellar where it's something on the building. This would be basically a solar farm.
Correct.
That was the source of the energy, it would be transferring to.
I know that the school district is really excited about that potential partnership and based on what I've, in meetings have heard with that regard, hundreds of thousands of dollars could be, at least to the school district. So I'd assume the city's going to have a substantial savings as well. It seems like a really good move forward for the city.
That's over a long period of time, the saves.
I think what we were talking about was like a hundred thousand a year.
Yeah, for the school district, it's, it's pretty significant. Other cities in the region are, are saving a lot, based on the estimates, just for a year, thousands of dollars. So, I just wanted to mention that, let you know that we're looking into that. We haven't made any sort of decision, but I think it's something that we can look at. That's all I got. Do we have a motion?
We've got ready. Motion, we go to Al.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.